Our new whole meeting room. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Not have any remote electronic attendance. Uh, roll call, please.
Heather, Kristen, William.
Present.
Messia.
Present.
Glenn.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moir.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Walton.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Right. The agenda. I mean, that's a public comment. I know we have one. E. We have three minutes.
You're in open.
Uh, my name is Tom Creep, Dr. Morey.
What place of way with that David, I mean, if you want to go through some of the highlights, that would be great.
Chapter six, clearly the best chapter of the ordinance. I thought I'd plan to go through and just kind of quickly run across all the recommended changes, I suppose. I'll go quick. Uh, the first three sections, eleven, one, brand twenty-eight, level two, and eleven oh three eight. This housekeeping changes to a removed and director of public works and um for eleven oh nine, the security. Um, this this will come up later when we talk about possible fines and those sorts of things. I don't have any problem with the language with the security. And this is the idea of having a security in case they breach something and whatever. But the the problem with that and I've worked on both sides of the counter and uh when uh people don't adhere to the code is the amount of times that anybody actually calls the security and then like says, okay, well, we're going to fix this and we're going to collect from the security. I asked them, like, there hasn't been an incident in the last ten years. And we know that there's been violations of this ordinance where things haven't been fixed in the right of way where uh 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 or extended period of time, thing hasn't been done. And so I just wanted to point that out so that I think we should still have the security, but I think we need an overlay on top of that to increase urgency. The ability for our staff to have a daily fine if they don't clean up the right of way in a certain period of time or or violate this ordinance in other ways.
Right. Any thoughts from council on that? Could be added in on debate in the future days.
But it or do you guys want to talk about fines now?
I think we should get to that section.
But really.
Continue.
Section six, eleven fourteen, the location of facilities. Uh, housekeeping change DPW director of city engineering. Eleven fourteen is probably the most important section of the ordinance. And we recommend it to be modified to allow overhead lines where overhead lines already exist. So on six, seven, fourteen, brand A, brand two, we recommend just the leading line facility shall be placed underground whenever feasible. In six, eleven, fourteen, brand A, brand six, brand D, location of facilities, just change the DPW to the city engineer. Next change is eleven fourteen, brand E, brand G, brand two. And location of facilities. Change it to read by adding. If at any time the city determines that existing wires, cables, or other facilities of public utilities could change from an overhead to an underground installation, the owner operator of a facility shall at no expense to the owner operator merge it system in that location to an underground installation unless the owner or operator's franchise agreement tariff applicable state or federal law provides otherwise. Overhead transmission law facilities cannot be converted underground installation and relocation costs will be borne by the responsible utility. That was simply added there to address things, for example, uh future reconstruction of of Seventh Avenue where we will want to uh consider putting utilities underground. If we do that, we want to be able to direct them to do that, but we would have to cover mid-American's cost for doing that net whatever they would have done spent to move a pole to stay overhead. Uh, so we just wanted to put that in there just to clarify it.
Sure.
Um, and I guess maybe this for for Margaret, is there any situations, I mean, in perpetuity, is that the responsibility of all the costs for that for the residents of the name to do, or is there a way that you can structure it? I mean, with the takings clause and all those sorts of things, you know, oftentimes there's a way to say, okay, if we force you within the next five years to go underground, then yeah, we'll bear the cost. But anything after that, because this is our policy and and those sorts of things that then the cost will be borne on you as we move these areas to to underground. Has any other communities done that? Is that a possibility?
Then I'm aware of, but again, have been overlooked yet.
Okay, it's it's just that cost to be a very large portion.
Oh, since it's significant, yes. And not aware, at least in Wisconsin, we had to pay MG need to go underground and and there were always knock down drag out plates.
Right, i- i- and I understand and and then that may be a function of state law, it may be something else, or it may be I've seen sometimes where we just haven't planned ahead and made it kind of our policy over time. And then once that time kind of runs out, they they have their they amortize their costs over whatever and now changes need to be borne by uh by by that. Sort of like when we change a sign policy, somebody's already paid for the sign, but but as long as we let them keep it for five years or whatever. Then.
Yeah, that's a good example.
That billboard. Th- th- then you can take them down. And so there there. I don't know, like I said, I don't know if it's state law, but if we could do something like that, that may then be something long term that uh really saves the residents a lot of money and beautify our our city. The the other thing along uh one fourteen. Because we're the 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 suggestion is to go from we're we're moving to becoming a city where things are going to be buried underground and and everything to if that's the way it is now, I continue just to to do it that way. But we have some areas where it's kind of half and half. Where there are some things that are buried within the uh the area and other stuff is maybe through the ravine, maybe the telephone is uh is is taken to the house, which there's less and less of than anymore. But in those situations with then a utility coming in, even though others have buried it in the area, that they would be able to go aerial because one other utility is is still aerial?
We were operating out of the assumption that if we're in a neighborhood and electric and phone are underground, then they must go underground. Well, in that corridor, not four blocks away on that block face. If they are overhead, then the telecom can go overhead. I'm not going to require the telecom to go underground if electric and phone are.
But what if one of them is underground and the other one's not?
I don't know if there are any situations with that. Uh.
But it but it's written in a way where if one's underneath and one's above, then they can go above. Right?
I think that's technically correct.
So I I would like that change. I mean, a- a- and maybe there there aren't situations, but I can think of 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 a few where it was some of these ravines where things are.
I I'm not worried about the ravines. If anybody tries to pull a permit and says there's phone running from that house in the ravine, therefore I can go overhead. I'm going to tell them, no, you're not.
But I I'm not sure that that's what this ordinance has in mind.
Yeah, they can they can come talk to the council then because I'm not going to issue a.
Well, but but then then let's just draft it the way that we.
Maybe we should just change it to that if the power is underground. I think ninety-five percent of the time, that's what you're going to.
Yeah, I I just want clarity that we don't want that separation or whatever.
No, I I understand completely.
All right, I still think that all should be underground of that, so.
So six, eleven, fourteen, brand F, this is the major one. Facilities installed above ground, above ground facilities may be installed only if, and we're going to say electrical service provider in the area is located underground. No existing, uh which will allow aerial installation mid and is aerial now location. Uh, delete this line. Brand two, new underground installation is not technically feasible and renumber line three to line two. I think that covers that one very simply.
Yeah, a question on that. I mean, one of the arguments that's made in both memos and everything is that the uh i- in your meeting, they said that it was either a uh possible or it was a violation of the FCC or the ICC, and I'm not really sure which one, but could they they use both in in in.
What they were, what's that, what they said was that if you have a situation where there are already existing aerial facilities, Mid-American, AT&T, MediaCom, for example, and then you make the last person in go underground. They said you are running uh close to disparate treatments, which the feds will not will not tolerate.
Right.
Just reporting that.
Right. And 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 when that was reported the first time, I had asked, can we have any examples of any time where that's actually happened?
I'm I'm not aware of it.
I mean, my my concern is, I mean, if if our staff attorney can't come up with any examples, we've asked them, because I asked them, I said, can you give me any examples? They haven't provided any. You have never seen any. It's just, it 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 seems like a bit of a scare tactic that goes like, hey, you've got to do this, otherwise it could be. And then nobody can ever show an example. Now, if we come up with an example, then then so be it. But I I'm hesitant that we make policy based off of.
Well, and and also.
What might be, but it's never been adjudicated as.
That's a factor for consideration, but it is also whether the council wants to require everything to go underground when there are things that are overhead regardless of what it says.
Mr. Mr. Timian had his hand up.
So I I I've said this before, and I think just as a matter of principle, as good members of the community, if I have three ball tires and one new one, it doesn't do any good. So, I mean, I would never want to force one utility underground while the rest are overhead. And I just think it's I I we can argue hypotheticals, and I don't know if we're really going to get anywhere with it. So I don't know their point in this conversation.
Mr. One.
The point is that they use this argument in both of the memos as reasoning to to make this change. And what I'm saying is, I would incremental change is how you improve. And I think that um, I mean, even Metronet, as they're coming through around my neighborhood, everything they put in, I think so far has been buried. I mean, and so uh um I think that by them doing it, then maybe the next person that comes through or changes that maybe they'll bury too. And then maybe eventually the neighborhood will be in a much better situation without all those uh poles and and those sorts of things. So um, I I think that incremental uh um improvement can result in eventual beautification of our city. So that that's the point.
I think just in terms of process for taking your points in consideration, um this, you said at the beginning, these were changes based on conversations with the utility companies, right?
That is true.
And so you are free to amend it as it comes forward. There's still research being done to answer questions that come up tonight. But we we won't get to the answer tonight. So if you could please continue, Mr. One.
Six thousand fifteen through eleven seventeen, our housekeeping changes are uh takes us to another big item, which is uh section six, eleven, eighteen, restoration. So six, eleven, teen uh change the time for restoration, which currently ten days to twenty days. But with the modifier that sidewalks and bike path shall be restored within ten days. Uh sidewalks and bike paths shall be made using materials and methods approved by the city engineer, et cetera. So just some changing there. Now, that was one of the items that the industry wanted a restoration timeframe of thirty days. Uh, we felt thirty days was was too long, so we recommended twenty, but also still keeping the more important sidewalk pieces in bike paths and things uh restored within within ten.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
I was just embarrassed to hear a little more explanation of why sidewalk bike path on that more aggressive schedule or if that's going to set us up in a situation of like I think it's easier to fail in that situation or what? Why why isn't it?
I just felt that it was more important than restoring somebody's front yard turf uh back to seed and 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 graded and things, that the sidewalk was necessary for pedestrian safety and mobility. Same thing for bike path and things that they were more important than your typical green, bright white shoulders and things. So nothing more, nothing less than that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. So I I like the way this is written, but one of the big problems that always comes up is that um a resident doesn't know who who it was that disturbed their ground.
Yeah.
And they don't have an easy way of contacting and getting um satisfaction. So they come, they come through and and disturb it, and then they put down a sod that's full of weeds and looks all lumpy and it's not like what, there's nowhere to call. And if you do find a number to call, then you're on hold for two hours. And, you know, how how do we, how do we get someone where a person can you know, go online and make a request and just get started?
Well, I I think we we have to go request. Uh, I don't know how we can provide a indicator to a property owner that, I mean, certainly if anybody calls us, we can look up that street through the permit processor, the spreadsheet to see if we can tie to who that was. And we're also getting the inspector positions, position filled uh soon. And that person hopefully will know, oh, well, that was uh an American doing some gas line work and and they will have the contacts with with them. I suppose we could try to make a a location on our webpage a little clearer for issues like this. Uh, I that's about the best I can think of off the top of my head.
Mr. Nias.
I have a suggestion for actually what we can do is because when they go out and they have all the utility locates any home right before they do their work. In fact, each utility has its own lawn guard in essence that they just leave a flag. If they were there, they're done with doing restoration. That if they're not happy, you know, who did it, whether it was a telecom or whether it was Mid-American or the gas company, it's clear who was out there and who did the restoration. And it's inexpensive. And we, you know, they did a great job. You just pull out on the garbage, that's what they did with us.
Thank you, Mr. One.
So you you would have a provision in here that says that they will remove all the other flags and leave just theirs as the.
And if they did the restoration.
Yeah, as the restoration.
And I'll restore it by, I don't care.
Yes. An expensive solution. Just have them put a door hanger.
Let's do a door hanger too. But you know, the problem you you heard is that most people don't use their front doors. Use their back doors, their side doors, and they may not even see the hanger. You know?
That's a question, good question to take back to the to the utility since this is.
Then give us a solution.
Sure.
Yeah, I I appreciate it, and I appreciate the the ten days for the sidewalks. And we we've run into to issues with that uh uh in the past. Would it maybe also have? Now, it's maybe a little bit subjective, but have a provision within it that that it has to be done in a workman like or whatever kind of manner we want to to say it is. And so I I I think it gets to the situation that all the more I was talking about is, you know, we don't want an incentive of a situation where they just throw junk down and say, okay, yeah, we 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 met the twenty days and and we moved on, and then we'll clean up things when people complain. But have a standard of of the weather repairs, and if they don't meet that standard, then they can be fined or or whatever. I think that that's probably the best way you're going to get compliance because if they feel like oh, I've got to do this right, otherwise I'm going to get, I'm going to get uh fined on the back end uh rather than, hey, I'll just try to get rid of it and see if nobody calls in and I'm deal with it. And and there is no uh downside for to that break. So I'd like to see something like that. And then the other is, and this pertains to some of our franchise agreements, which for their restoration, they have a provision that overrides this that says that it has to be done within two weeks of the completion of their project. And we ran into an issue where they considered their project as the entire summer uh construction season. And so nothing got done all summer long. And so if we have some kind of provision in here that defines what a project is, because it's not defined in our uh in our um uh franchise agreement, that and maybe that's a block, maybe that's two block, I I, you know, whatever you guys think is 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 reasonable. But then the clock will start because they would move through entire neighborhoods and be on the other side of town and say, oh, so what kind of this project? Sorry, word to all your sidewalks. So we still have two weeks until we're.
Your house, Jason.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's another suggestion. Mr. Nias, did you want to say? Oh, okay. Right. Mr. One.
It's a franchise uh language as restoration shall be completed within two weeks of substantial completion of the gas or electrical work. So it it doesn't specifically say project. Uh.
I think it's somewhere else in that. I'll I'll find it, but I think it's.
Just put that into the column of things to follow up on tonight.
Well, the the issue is how you how you define for them what is their project? I mean, or in first off, I mean, we can't really make Mid-American do anything because their franchise agreement is in place for how many more years. I don't know how long those last, but it supersedes the ordinance. So no matter what we change, they can always point to that and say. You know?
But the idea is if you define the things that are in there that are undefined in this franchise agreement, and it does have a two week window, then you say this means this, that triggers the two weeks. You haven't done it within the two weeks, you're in violation of the franchise agreement. And it's, I mean, it it may mean that we have to be specific on how we define whatever project or whatever the gas and and whatever. You know, if that's your concern, but it's certainly something we can do.
They're they're pulling permits for projects that run several miles. And we made clear in our, in the permit language that there was to restore sidewalk in any hard surfaces as they go, not upon the completion of project. Now, they could come back to me and say, uh-uh. It says here.
But but that's exactly why we say, no, you do because.
So I say, okay, but your project can only be two blocks in length. So now we have to pull ten permits.
So let me get, so let me sum up what I'm hearing. You're saying it's overly burdensome to take on the definition of the project.
But you're also saying, wait, hang on.
I'm not sure how to do it.
Okay, and you're also saying though that there are multiple layers here. The permit has one language and the ordinance has another. So probably the most efficient energy should go toward aligning the permit and the ordinance if possible.
It would have been, but if they had been.
All right.
But I don't know when it's.
Okay.
Their franchise agreement is left forward.
Another item for follow up, it sounds like to me. Mr. Schmidt.
And just in that with I recognize saying, oh, if you have two mile stretch or or N mile stretch, you're not going to pull an ordinance for a permit for every two blocks, but if there's a way in that permitting approval to to put it there to say.
And and that's a.
And then kind of break it up and to say, here's ten stretches and yeah, once you finish it, you have to there with that permitting side.
Okay.
That's what we planned that we put in our permit for project that a Mid-American has worked, you know, permit, a very long project, installing some fiber optic cable from their substations to substations. And they pulled one permit, but we said you have to restore the sidewalk as you as you go. And if they are leaving sidewalk downtown open for undue periods of time, we'll start threatening to revoke their permit.
And and if we move forward and now that path giving the current franchise agreement, I think we could still put a definition in place so that as the franchise agreements come back around, there the default becomes kind of understood.
I agree. I think that American wants to do what we want. This last bit, they just could not get a contractor to do the work for them. That was the problem. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next up.
Okay. Little one, okay.
Well, I think penalties is probably the kind of quickly guidelines. So I had asked about penalties and and I think your response was, I know there's penalties, but I'm not sure where they're at. This is.
The references penalties in the section, and this is the same ordinance that East Moline has, Rock Island has the same language. But we don't know what those penalties are. There's Davenport does not, as best to our knowledge, have a penalty structure for uh utilities in the right of way. Bettendorf has uh if you're caught without a permit, you have to pay twice the fee for a permit. I think that is extensive what they have. But nothing in there for failure to restore. I'm of the opinion that if we just work with these people and say, look, you're not getting this work done, we're not going to we're keep, we're not going to issue a new permit. Or if you keep playing this game over both an existing permit, they know they have to work with the city.
Yeah, I I appreciate that and and I wish it was that way as well. But I mean, we ran into this this issue. You know, you you say Mid-American went through to this project, but they couldn't find a contractor to come back and, but they found a contractor to do all the work. I mean, they made the decision to tear up all of these sidewalks and go all the way through. And if they couldn't then clean things up so that our residents all summer long had to go and walk over gravel pits through through all the neighborhoods, then back on that, our residents want to pay the price for that that entirety. I mean, we we have run into issue after issue where we, I understand we might have the ability to not not give them any permits. But we presumably have continued to give them permits. Because we haven't had anybody come to us and say, I can't get permits, you know, what's the reason why? Having that of those fines in place, that, I mean, we've got fines in in our ordinance all over the place where sometimes we use them and sometimes we enforce them and sometimes we we don't charge them. We work with them and find a a solution. But I think having those teeth available in those situations, especially like you said, if it talks about penalties and we can't even find or really understand where they're at.
I I don't think there was for this section.
Yeah, I I I think that that it would be good for you to come back with how that would lay out. And if we decided policy wise, we we don't want to find them, then I guess that's that's one thing. But I I think for the betterment of our community or the beautification, the aesthetics and the treatment of our our residents, it needs one simple thing.
Mr. One.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I feel that being overly vindictive with fines and threatening. I understand that the end result is to have the work done on it in a timely manner. I totally get that. I don't think it works, especially when um things are out of the the contractor's control. If they can't find a subcontractor doing renovation, uh why are we, you know, there there's a market in play here. Maybe all the contractors are on other jobs that maybe they're working on our roads already, you know? So I think there needs to be a level of understanding and compassion here. Um, and trying to build community partnerships with these these utility providers, I think is probably the best way forward. And, you know, we have people in 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 the in the field monitoring these jobs and and calling them out on it. And yeah, we can dangle uh re- relocation permits or future permit withholding as a punitive measure, but I think just living fine after fine just makes us look like the uh the bullies in the Quad Cities.
You, Mr. Paul, have a better hand?
I understand that there is a market, and if they wanted to, they just didn't want to pay the prices that the that there are contractors out there that would have the name of the doing. It just wasn't within whatever they were going to charge. And so I I I appreciate the sentiment, but there are people willing to work out there.
Did you have documentation of that?
Sure, I'll I'll.
Okay, gentlemen.
I would be more than happy to provide a a a number of contractors that was in more than happy to go in and fill.
Mr. Schmidt.
I come somewhere to the middle here, understanding, and there are definitely some very easy places where you need to add something. I mean, you know, the example from, from Bettendorf, get caught operating without a permit, the ability to level double, even triple a permit. I mean, that's a simple one that I think we should be wanting to have, because that's a, you know, it's a, it's very easy, quick, straightforward and corrective, actually. The others, I think, do require a little more cooperation and understanding. And, and granted, we'll know if someone is working with us, talking it through, can provide the proof of the problems they're having, that that is a place we don't want to go too human. I, I agree with that one too much in that direction. But I still think there are probably some places where we can add a couple fines.
We can, we, I can put something together based on what some other cities have done outside of Chicago and Queens.
Yes, Mrs. Souths.
Dang, so there is the general penalty, um, provision in the code. All that. Right, that would apply.
But it re- references a table of fees and I don't, and I don't know where that is, nor could. It said, it wasn't just me, Alder, when you're.
Yeah, so that's a whole separate issue. But eleven one dash eleven oh seven does provide a general penalty for violation of the code.
But it doesn't prescribe a dollar about.
Yes, it does. Seven fifty per violation. And each day, it's one dash eleven oh seven in chapter one.
It, it doesn't reference it, but you have to know to go back to chapter.
I'm bad here.
No.
No, it's just.
Okay.
Bad track.
Mr. What?
So, a- along these lines, and this gets back to the eleven seventeen that we after months and months and months of that, of installation without permits uh, overhead and in violation of the permits that were ordered and whatever, we do have uh, eleven seventeen where we did send out the cease and desist and, and those sorts of things. But again, that doesn't have fine, you know, I, I don't think it's got the teeth in there because what wound up happening was like, oh yeah, that, that's great, but we're just going to keep our stuff up there and you've got to go through the whole, we're going to have to go through munitions to have them take it down and all those different things. But if you then have fines on top of it or, or have those things laid out, then you have a carrot and a stick to say, hey, we, we want to work with you, but if you're refusing to work with us, then here are the.
Okay, points made. Please continue, Mr. Beattie.
Six eleven nineteen through eleven twenty, some housekeeping changes for Director of Public Works, Senator, and finally, section six dash twenty one oh two print A. I just hope, wish to clarify that utility and telecoms only needed to execute one license, licensing agreement per year. We had a situation where one of the smaller firms was having to go through that licensing process several times with finance, and my understanding was you only had to do that once per year and then just pull a permit, but not go through the. Yes, exactly. So that was just something that we needed to work out with Carol.
Thank you so much.
Those are the only changes I have.
Well, uh, we will look forward to any updates you can give us about that and about the questions that have come up tonight.
I will, I will.
Especially the debatable ones.
Some of their visions and, and this all, yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Miss Beattie has eight point two. We do have many guests here this evening. Thank you for waiting um, until now for us to get to this relevant chapter or fellow program, rental housing.
Hey. Seven forty five, I'm going to try and get out of here, right? Is that correct? All right. Long last, um, first of all, I want to recognize, yeah, there are, we do have several guests here. We've got a lot of the employees in here this evening. And if you're in here and you have something to do with housing one way or another, acquired department, building division, public works department, this char recruiting of this community development.
Questions?
I've been, I've lost my wifi, I guess no.
There you go, that's a problem. No. All right, that portion of the review, we have a Joe here. We've got M C D C as well, we've got a public housing authority. The land bank, I missed land bank. There you are, Mary. All right, you were behind Drake's big head, I'm sorry. So anyhow, I'm excited about this, and the reason I am is, is that, you know, I first came here, I didn't expect that housing was going to be on the top of the chart, I really didn't. Yeah, you had a long list, laundry list of things you wanted to do, and, you know, part of it was rental housing inspection, part of it was crime free housing. You know, but those are all just part and parcel of part of a much bigger issue, a bigger, a bigger issue that we have as a city. Bigger issue than all the cities have, have here on the Illinois side, including Davenport. And that's what to do with our housing stock, what do we do with our neighborhoods? No question about it, you, you know, in the last couple meetings, uh, few months ago, that people spoke up and said, what about our neighborhoods? What are you doing? And, uh, and, and I believe it was very much heartfelt with their longtime homeowners. Yeah, there are people who just moved in here yesterday, but they probably weren't raised in those homes, or got married and bought that house and lived it their whole life, so. Um, we have this housing issue and, and we can all define it differently. But I, but I think it goes from, you know, we have wonderful housing in certain parts of the city, and then we have housing in parts of the city where it's either been, you know, in some cases abandoned or it's been, you know, sitting vacant. Uh, or, you know, it hasn't been well maintained, property maintenance standards. You know, and, and I'm not too surprised because we are an old mill town. They're an old city, they're an old mill town, and whether you're from Pittsburgh, as we learned from Mayor Murphy when he was here, or we were driving him around, you know, he had great ideas. He's like, he goes, been there, done that. Because that can be, all be fixed, right? And he said, but it all takes money. I said, well, we'll get to the money, right? We have to get to the money. Maybe we've had a community development block grant program going on for, it's a forty nine years now?
Forty nine.
Yeah, forty nine years. We have a public housing authority that goes back to, I believe, nineteen sixty eight, right around there.
Oh, nineteen forty.
Nineteen forty eight. So, housing as an issue has been around for a long time, a lot longer than most of us have even been alive, actually. So. The podium. Now, so, so where do we go with it? So what I wanted to do is just kind of just, kind of do a real quick presentation for you in terms of where we were, where we were, where we are at now, and then some suggestions for the future that we're going to need to deliberate in council and staff and with our partners uh, as we go forward. So that neighborhood revitalization is really kind of the endgame, is how do we restore our community? You know, whether it's the old homes of Ward one, or two, or three, or, you know, I think every ward except seven five might have much, you know, the older housing stock, because we, we redrew the line, so I don't have the map memorized, it's up there. And so anyhow, there's a number of public entities involved in this. Obviously, it's the city, Rock Island County, uh, the state, they're the only housing development authority, and other agencies, uh, and then the federal government, you know, with the Housing Urban Development Department, which basically is our C D V G source of revenues. Uh, there are private entities out there, individual investors that look to do business here in Moline, uh, lending institutions, there's plenty of them here in the Quad Cities uh, and elsewhere, and then local businesses as well. Um, I should have probably put the, uh, put the arsenal in there on their public entities as well, because they have a great interest in housing, all these things. As we learned at the P M T meeting today, they definitely are interested in what we're doing downtown to provide traditional apartments. Because they have, you know, pretty large workforce. Um, local partnerships, we, of course, tonight, we have, we, we created this multi jurisdictional land bank with East Moline and Rock Island, Mary is running that for us. Uh, M C D C has been around a long time here in the city, and Janelle is, is running that at this point, and, uh, you know, trying to refocus. I think if anything, Mary's trying to gain a focus on where we're going. And I think the same thing is a refocus that's happening over with, with, uh, M C D C. And I'm happy about that because that's what needed to happen. You know, the Moline Housing Authority, I know John, who we're here in the back in the room over there, how many years you been here?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years. Yes, a long time, just say a long time. And, and there's a laundry list of people, almost a thousand people on a list looking for housing. They can't find it. And I asked him after our first meeting that we ever had, I said, John, you had a thousand people on a waitlist, it's nine eighty four, right? So, I do agree with that. And nine hundred eighty four people, I looked at him and said, where are they? Where are they? Because normally, you know, you don't have a house, where are you living? They're living in people's basements, they're living in garages, they're living in cars, they're coming and going. You know, those are basically, that's your homeless population that's finding a way to go somewhere for sheltering. Some of them are probably in the shelter waiting to get in. So, you know, they're a partner at the table with us. Uh, Habitat for Humanity, you know, we've worked with them for years to do great things. World Relief, I mean, they are managing the, the immigration in, in, into the Quad Cities and then eventually sometimes out of the Quad Cities. But they are intimately knowledgeable about what's going on with that population and finding places for these people to live. You know, who want to be here. Um, and then Renew Moline, of course, I mean, they're a tight partner of ours and will continue to be, so, next slide. So, here's your ordinances. You've got a rental housing ordinance that, you know, that is pending, we've put that together, we have a vacation rental unit ordinance, we also put that together with the ancillary clinic. And then you got your existing crime free housing ordinance, we'll speak to in a moment, and then your vacant property registration. You know, something that Brad Holman is always working on, it's probably this time of year. The slower time, snow's gone, so you'll be out and about soon. Uh, next slide. So a little history, our rental housing program was enacted back in oh seven, originally managed through, through our legal department at the time. They expected, inspected two units and above, except for owner occupied duplexes. At that time, personnel wise, we had a rental housing coordinator who also doubled as a FOIA officer, a second rental housing inspector that doubled as a lead inspector because of our lead inspection program that we get funding from I D four. And then the program changed in two thousand eighteen, when there was the retirement of our rental inspector, and then all the inspections were taken over by the fire department. Right? They've gladly taken over by the fire department, right? Probably not, but they took it over. And the fire department inspected for fire code compliance only. That was their job, as in most cities, they're looking for life safety code issues. That's what fire departments are there to inspect, life safety code. Right? Talking about, you know, alarms, we're talking about sprinklers, we're talking about exit signs, uh, fire extinguishers, CO two detectors, we name it. That's what they're looking for, typically in multifamily buildings, that's where, that's where they do their business. So they're looking for that. And then when the, the rental inspectors sent out a combined fire and property maintenance letter, and then they had a single family residential, they were excluded. So no single family residential. Get to the number of those involved. It's very significant. Uh, recent history going up until about this last year, fire department expects all rental units, two units and above, that's basically being done, it was a drive by. Uh, if it looked like it needed inspection, they, they, they would stop and do the inspection. If it didn't, they didn't. And, and they would respond, if there was a call for service, they would respond mid inspection. But they were out in the field. You know, they didn't have vehicles to do it, they were using our expensive fire apparatus, which as you know, recent purchases is largely expensive. You know, so we're trying to stop that, that's one of the goals, to stop that. Uh, especially the ladder truck. Okay, it's a three million dollar piece of apparatus. So, uh, neighborhood improvement program got absorbed into public works. Uh, there are no rental housing inspections, except, except in response to complaints. So it is not a proactive program, it is react. So unless we get a complaint, we're not doing it. I mean, there has to be a qualified complaint, could be through the cell system, or go request, or it could be a phone call, could be an email. You know, Brad could be out having dinner and somebody complained to you in here downtown, that's why you go to Silverstone ranks to be downtown. Get away from it, they don't know it. Then, you know, what the council strategic goal was to ex- expand the single family residential rentals, it's concern of council legitimately, uh, to initiate single and multifamily rental inspections programs. I would say multifamily in earnest more so, and initiate single, because that's really where we're at today, next slide. Uh, for the, so what did the council do? Council invested money. Council invested money by saying, okay, we're going to have a rental housing coordinator, Hallie Jackson. Smile at us all. She got promoted into that position and, uh, she's looking for some solid directions with this administration. And I, and I think, uh, from this council. Rental housing inspector, that position is advertised, we're going to fill that position. So in essence, you're going to have a coordinator and an inspector, and then you got a neighborhood improvement officer, your chief of code, basically. Uh, chief code. Chief code mission, because you need a badge. So anyhow, um, but that's it, that's what you have in this, in the city. Plan calls for the fire department to inspect rental housing complexes with eleven or more units, fire safety code, so life safety code for our larger multifamily complexes throughout the city. Relieving the fire department of those smaller properties and referring those then back to, uh, building division. Uh, calls for the building division to inspect single family and all multifamily units that are less than ten units. So, duplexes, quadplexes, and eightplexes, there is. Next one. So, so the proposed ordinance changes that alliance. Uh, we added inspection of single family residential properties, we added a section for updated fees and penalties. We added inspection to do to probable cause complaints, and then revise from registration to a license with penalties and possible revocation. Uh, that's a lot. It's a lot to bite off, and we could debate every one of those tonight. But I think what we're trying to do is give you an idea as to where this program may need to go in order to have meaningful results. That's what this is about, is getting meaningful results. We've been at this for decades, right? And, and it's kind of like, you know, we, we're reactionary, we're not really like super proactive, right? Uh, so we're trying to flip this on its head, right? If you take a look at the rental housing programs that are here in the Quad Cities right now, you know, you've got Davenport, Rock Island, uh, both with old housing stock like Moline, I mean, we're obviously in the middle there, I mean, in terms of size. But you can see where they're at. Davenport's got nine point two five inspectors based on their population. Rock Island's got four, and right now, we really have two. We have two. So the question is, is how do we get to four point two, four or five? Remember that number, magic number. Uh, it's like snow, when I get it done, you're going to have bodies. Want to have a being wild and programmed, you have their bodies. Uh, rental housing, so program challenges, um, we're recommending one rental housing coordinator, which we have, instead of just one inspector, we're going to need to increase that up to four. Um, and then one administrative assistant to back them up, so these people can be in the field doing their work, with the tablet in their hand. Right? So is it doing their, their single family residential housing inspection for these rental properties, they can also be doing code work. Can't walk past the problem. If you see the problem, you know it's in the tablet, you're going to see that in a minute. Uh, first phase is multifamily because that's our biggest, biggest challenge, we need to tackle that first with the fire department. There's going to be a need, uh, we've got one person, one person only. I know you're on, online Mitch, I hope you're enjoying Florida tiki bar. Is there Mitch?
He's muted.
You're muted Mitch, we can't hear you. That's probably, you're probably cursing.
Yes, yes, they're on there.
Yeah, so, so, you know, great guy, super talented, you know, and, and extremely valued rival to the city, the fire department is our, our fire marshal, but he needs help too. Right? There's no succession for Mitch. And Mitch is on vacation, things have to kind of wind down or stop because there's really nobody there, and yet we do have the position. And yet we do have the position actually inside the fire, fire rescue department. It's just not filled. Why? I don't even know if it's funded at any point. But that's one of those issues that we talked about when we talk about succession, because Mitch is gonna want to retire one day to Florida, so that's how that works. Um, next slide. Uh, vehicles and equipment, wow. You know, if I heard anything from Sarah Mark, it was like after we started hiring all these people. He goes, where am I gonna get the cars? Because I don't have the vehicles for these. It's not really clean, great, Mike, but you don't have equipment. I had to put them out there personally, vehicles and reimburse them and then have all kind of workers kind of liability. I don't want to deal with that. That's, that's a bad situation. So, you know, challenges, rental housing software is needed. We really don't have a good program. So we are investigating software programs and have been. Uh, we've got technical committees, that's all they're doing with David Rowat. This is one of those areas, is how do we get the proper program in place so that we can track the owners, the rental inspections that have taken place? Leave behind forms with the owners or the tenants once we're done and, and then be able to send them reminders electronically. So it reduces the amount of time we have to return into the field. Uh, vehicles, again, I just mentioned that we obviously would need more vehicles. It could be electric vehicles for all of here. It could just be tiny things. They don't have to be anything fancy, but they have to be a means to get around and they have to be properly labeled and hopefully light.
I listen to all of them.
No, no laptops were budgeted and, and it could be laptops, you know, like we use in police and fire because they're ruggedized. Uh, I've done it where we've done building inspections in the field and we're using ruggedized tablets. They're not even ruggedized laptops. And they are less expensive, but they are water resistant and they're, you know, shake resistant. You can actually use them in the field. The nice thing is you finish the work in the field, you come back into the office, hit the button and everything uploads onto the server. That's, that's where we're trying to get to. Trying to streamline that process.
Anyways, it is. Excuse me for my, my math. Is seven thousand a piece a real like legitimate estimate for these laptops?
Ruggedized ones in the, in the Quad Cities.
Uh, so if we're talking about mounting in vehicles, that is, that is a full stand power rugged laptop. If we're talking about tablets, then, then no.
All right, we're gonna try bringing it down.
I might go help that also. Uh, when we were putting together the budget number, it was laptops and we're gonna, they're gonna have workstations of course. Yeah, yeah, in the office. So you put the two together and I bet you you're gonna go, yeah, that makes a lot more sense, doesn't it?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So this is again, this is nothing more than a minimal estimation of what it would cost to fully roll out a program where you've got four and a quarter, four and a half people trying to implement this across entire city. There are some forty-five hundred properties we're talking about, which is, is a, it's not a good number. Practically represents about thirty percent change of the housing stock. And you never want to go over twenty as a rule. So we've got an issue in terms of where we're at today and how we got there isn't irrelevant at this point. Dialing it back, how do we dial that number back short of not allowing anymore? And then building additional housing to bring the number down. That's the other way to do it. Is that we, we just grandfather it, so that's it, we're done. Um, but those are all legal questions. That's the place where they have to work with us, right? So you can see the numbers, I'm not gonna highlight them, but you can see personnel costs, vehicles, software, laptops. You know, uh, finance department, fire department, then it folds. So it's not gonna be cheap. It was about six hundred thousand dollars. That's what it is. Okay. Uh, here's a challenge, main source of revenues right now would be licenses and registrations, including inspection fees. Uh, other revenues would be reinspection fees or other charges or coordinating those fines through munisance. Munisance is, it's another topic that we're going to have to tackle eventually. I know the chief and I've been talking about that. While now and all the managers, administrators are talking about it. What are we gonna do with it? It's not working. This is not working. We're just simply subsidizing it for everybody around us. If you look back at what we put into it versus what we're actually taking out, we have to write a check. And we've been doing that. So that's a topic for another night and we're working on that. All right, so here you go. Um, assuming for a minute that we would have a hundred dollar registration cost for single family rentals, you can see forty-five hundred units or multifamily hundreds. And that was what the number was as opposed to anything else. You know, look all the way across. We could end up with six hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in revenue coming in off of all these rental properties. One of the things I had told Mike Dory before he left was when he started this, he said, you know, how do we, how do we break even? How do we make this so that those who benefit by renting properties and they live off of rental incomes? That they pay as they go and that those who don't do that and live here are not subsidizing it. And that's basically kind of a wash at that, at that level. Which is, we're, you know, we're not recommending anything tonight, we're just discussing. Okay, so there you go. So you can see revenue versus expense, so a good break even. Uh, next part of it, you do have the ordinance on, on crime, uh, crime free housing. That's been a challenge with the police department. I'm sure Chief Dolph can speak to that better than I. I mean, it started out with manager and assistant. Do the model after probably a successful program, I guess, out in Arizona. Uh, and the multi-unit rental pregnancy that got licensed, registered and inspected. Phase one was management training for the owners of local agents, which was taught by R P D. There was a survey done by the police department concentrating on safety and security. For the tenants who reside in those properties. And then community awareness training, which is that annual class that provides training for that purpose of the program. Uh, the numbers are not there as you're going to see, next slide. Then we've got, well, I'll stop for a minute. Uh, I would say, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but you probably have one-third in compliance, two-thirds not in compliance?
Uh, I'm not very good at math. Uh, two fifty-seven, two hundred fifty-seven, taking the seminar representing five hundred sixty-six properties, one hundred forty-four properties are not.
Yeah, a quarter. So, so a real challenge, you know, and what are we accomplishing by it? What are we achieving by it? Is it measurable? You know, are we getting tangible, measurable results to the level of effort that we put into it? You know, there's no, there's no, uh, there's no metric that would be, you know, other than sheer base numbers. So did it actually prevent crime? Did it produce the intended result? And I don't know how we would measure that right now tonight. That's one of the things you'd want to do. Uh, vacation rentals, units, Airbnbs, I know the council has brought this up. Uh, we're not flooded. This is now Orlando, Florida, where everybody has, has an Airbnb. I mean, literally, you wanna, you wanna stay in Florida, chief, get an Airbnb outside of Disney World, there's thousands of them. Higher community, literally. We have in, in the city, a number of, of, uh, Airbnbs that, that the R B Os. Uh, they produced about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue. You're twenty-five, so how do we know that? Well, we talk into a company, that's what they do. They go out, they track foreclosures, they track Airbnbs, Airbnb's. They know what's going on in your community based upon information that they can gather off Silicon Valley. So they know. So we're gonna have to go through a process of, you know, registering or licensing these, these places. And then getting enough to pay Keith, the money that he's often chasing down. Right? He's a good money chaser, but he's gotta know where they're at. Okay, once he knows, he's out, right? So we'd be all right. So, uh, should we separately license and register these short-term rental properties as vacation rental units? As opposed to our long, long-term rentals? Some, some cities will, uh, will restrict Airbnbs and VRBOs to a minimum of two days, some as much as three days as a rental, so that you can't rent it on a Friday night for a party, become a public nuisance instead of the police department go out. And sometimes they say it'll be two nights minimum. Sometimes it's three. Depends upon how aggressive the city wants to be toward having vacation rentals in the state. But this, this is a good one. Um, we can move on. And then again, hundred dollars we charge is not the same thing we're charging everybody else. And then every, every January one, everybody has to pay. All right, vacant, default and mortgage property license registrations. So chapter twenty, article three, registration of vacant properties and properties with defaulted mortgages. Regulates vacant properties and problems with defaulted mortgages. Uh, oftentimes hard to track, very difficult. Uh, but it can be done. We have reached out to companies that do just that. That's what they do. They can provide us with a list. We don't do the research, you know, and, uh, when we, you know, we're successful in getting done what we want to get done as a city. You know, they'll get paid unless we get paid. And they get paid nominally in relationship to what, what we do. So we're gonna be looking at that as well. And all else, but Brad is doing help, the field is trying to track these processes. So right now they have to be required to register. They're gonna be vacant for more than ninety days. We've had instances where people are going overseas. Military people want to go overseas, they're gonna be assigned, they don't want to sell their house. And we really want their house to sit vacant for two years. Who's gonna, who's gonna clean the snow? Who is going to cut the grass? All those things become code enforcement issues for department. So not an easy one to deal with. And this registry would be for six months, right? Timeline the license registers within ten days of property becoming vacant, initial fee would be a hundred and fifty and then reach six month and ten, and then after that a hundred. Um, and then later.
Increases by a hundred.
Yeah, it increases. Six months. Yep. So pathways, the meaning will change, you know? Retaining a program manager, a minimum of four inspectors that administer straight support person to staff the program. I'm looking at not immediately here in twenty-three, if it's too quick, it's too much. I really need to work with everybody, all of our partners and internally with council, come up with the right answer for Moline. So this would be something we would roll out, you know, starting in twenty-three with Holly and Brad and whoever we hired, work with Holly. You know, take a bite out of the multifamily side of the issue first, that apple goes down first. And then in twenty-four, we start to tackle issues related to single family residential inspections. It's a big issue with forty-five hundred units. Uh, we'd have to have some kind of dedicated funding to sustain this program. I mean, it really needs to be funded if we're gonna see results. Uh, it's, it's a team approach, as I said, that's gonna include multiple departments that think you're all sitting in this room tonight. And then building linkages closely with the land bank, M C D C, M H A, Habitat and others. You know, I can't stress that enough. I mean, as we take properties through processes and procedures, we have avenues to send them to, whether it's your land bank, whether it's the M C D C, you know? You know, that's how we can have the results that we're intending. You know, the question is then, you know, public-private partnerships with lenders and federal state grants. Um, I'm gonna, Alex and I are gonna continue our discussion with, with Mayor Ford. Uh, it was very interesting, Murphy, didn't say Ford? Ford was in Toronto, sorry, I knew him too. A disgraced guy. Have a little disgrace. Uh, but anyhow, you know, Mayor Murphy has got some great ideas in terms of what works. So he's got some great ideas in terms of what, what he accomplished in his three terms as mayor there. They had a city where half the housing went vacant down. People were leaving in droves. They were going to places like Cranberry and, you know, the outlying areas where all the new housing was. Sounds real familiar when you look across the, across the river. People go where they want to go. If they want something good, or they go to Ward Seven, or they go south of the airport. Um, we want to get past that. This is what it looks like in my mind right now. This is what it looks like. It's all over. We have ordinances, we got people, we got organizations, but how do we take that and turn some logic into it? Next slide. There, that's how, that's how it should be. So we would have our partners, which we've identified over there on the left. We would have our public and private funding sources there in the middle, which is the lifeblood of the program. That's what makes it works. Makes it work. And then the program area. So there's your vacant abandoned properties, your rental inspections for single family, multifamily, crime-free housing and any Airbnb and any other housing issues that we come up with. There may be more than, there may be more partners than this. There may be other funding sources. So we as a city need to wrap our hands around embracing. If we don't, it's not gonna change. It's not gonna change overnight. I mean, it took, it took, well, you know, I would say probably the downturn started significantly in nineteen, nineteen eighties. That's probably when it really starts, when the industries went down. That's what happened in all the milk towns. They lost their industries, off went the jobs, off went the people, and then the housing got left behind. Now, you can drive down any street in Moline, and I mean this sincerely, you can drive down any of the streets in Moline. Look at those beautiful old houses that are all over the place. And you know what? You could be in Old Park, you could be in La Grange, you could be in, in Lake County. Those same houses got built there too. They're there. The only difference is people are getting careless, you know? So we're gonna have to come up with formulas and ways to assist the elderly. Who want to stay in their house, right? They're not leaving, the kids can't force them out, but they can't go out and do any of that work. Right? You know, then you got young people moving in. I see a lot of young people in some of these old houses when I drive around. How many don't? Right? So, so that's a good thing. That's a good thing that you're, that some of the young people are moving into those homes because they're more affordable, but we could actually help them improve them more rapidly. So that's what all the funding sources are about, is how do we take, as, as Murphy said, how do we take and leverage our money? To make it more effective. So if we're gonna spend a dollar, we find three dollars somewhere else. So then instead of a million dollar program, we got a four million dollar program. And that was the trick. That's how they were able to flip entire neighborhoods. They went literally neighborhood by neighborhood. We have very, how many neighborhoods?
Uh, thirty around.
Thirty, around thirty identified names. You know, I, what I always thought about Moline that was really super cool is that it's all these neighborhoods. And they all have names. You look at a map of Chicago and the suburbs, I mean, the city of the South, not the suburb, but the city, it's all neighborhood. They're all identified on a map. Go there and you can see it, right? Moline's no different. You have neighborhoods. I, I would say that if you cross the river, you're not gonna find neighborhoods in that. You're gonna find subdivision, but not neighborhoods. So we're gonna be looking at identifying these neighborhoods and signage for these neighborhoods and, you know, bringing back that identification that instills a sense of pride of where you live. Um, inexpensive project, but effective in making people, changing psyche. And, and these programs on housing, we're gonna be working on this for years to come. This is, this is the next twenty, thirty years. Not gonna happen overnight, so I don't want you to feel pressured. We just need support doing this work. So with that, we've got a room of experts. You know, you know, I'm not a housing expert, I wouldn't say that, it's just, but I get it. You know, that.
In the short term, I know that we talked about Brad getting like some help. I, I don't know where that is on the hiring. Uh, but that was talked about not that long ago, that we're gonna hire assistant for Brad. Is that still something that's gonna happen or hasn't happened or?
I think we settled, what we settled in on is that at one point it's going to be a co-enforcement or neighborhood improvement officer position. And, and back, back then, when Joe was still here, a little back, he was still here, they, they talked about creating these, these housing inspector positions. We saw where this was headed. So the rental housing inspector position and the rental housing coordinator actually could do the same work that Brad is doing if they're properly trained. Because just like Mitch Cunningham, I need to have a succession plan for this man. One day he's gonna have enough. I wanna retire. I'm not gonna work fifty years like Walter.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Subtract. And, no, I'm serious. I mean, you need that. And I think this young team that we're trying to assemble is there to actually back him up and support him.
But I mean, in addition to residential, like single family home, uh, housing, he's also got abandoned storefronts that we've got a lot of.
Commercial property.
Commercial property. Probably not as important because you're asking people to live in, you know, you know, housing, but you know, we do have like a banning gas station thing that he also has to to keep up with.
This is true.
Well, the, I, the council decided not to, um, increase our staffing this last year and this last budget, correct? Well, the, I, the council decided not to, um, increase our staffing this last year and this last budget, correct? Except for the grant writer and managerial bit, so.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys, you know, with future budgetary allocations to shore up where you think we need to shore up.
You bring it up.
Brad, Brad has a.
If I could, all the men on Brian, I think that just the addition of rental housing inspectors will help me tremendously because all those calls are going to me now. And so, while you're right, I have a lot of different things on my plate. These, the rental inspector, I, I mean, just having the addition of Holly already has taken some things that I would have normally looked at. Holly's already addressing some of those. So, I think, even though it's not called that specifically, I think it is making a difference. And when we hire the next one, it does make more of a difference if that, if that helps.
It'll free you up to do some of that commercial stuff, like the gas station we're working on, which you're on Donovan Fox.
Correct. I mean, I, I do come, you know, like the McKinley schools, you know, all them and O'Brien and that. Van yard's building this gas station, this church, all that is, is kind of in my wheelhouse too. So, just getting some of the day-to-day rental complaints, um, out of my hair, so to speak. I, I think I'll have more time to dedicate to those type of problems that are frankly a little bit bigger in nature. Um, that take a lot more time and, um, and so I think that there is help on the way. It just may not be called what was originally talked about, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Wayne?
I have a statement and a question. So, um, and Amanda Radel, you worked in Rock Island in the, um, uh, rental inspection department. And she told me that, um, it, it, it was great, not only because it protected renters, but it also protected landlords. When there is photographic evidence, when people move in, the state of the, uh, the apartment before and after. They, uh, anyone that makes a claim, they can just make a FOIA request, get that photo, and then prove themselves. So, I think there's a real added benefit. And to your point, it will drive out slum lords who are making false claims and, you know, just really taking advantage of immigrant communities and a lot of uh, just people down on their luck. Uh, my next question, Barry, I read your memo that you put in there, and I'm a little confused about, uh, the, the local agent language. You wrote this memo, I assume, well, your name was on it. Oh, it was Ansel Link, something like that. It was two, two.
There you go, there's a.
Take ownership. Okay, uh, the local agent, uh, I apologize. Um, I, the sentiment is that we have, that these are local owners who own the properties. Why are we then allowing the city clerk to be a local agent? It, it feels like it's a complete disregard of the intent of it.
So, let's have Dan, uh, speak to that. I like your background.
You see Dan's background? I like it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Um, the, uh, local agent requirement, I think that might be an existing that, that the whole local agent piece is an existing part of the ordinance that currently exists. And I think the, the idea is, uh, to, you, you know, that's a default provision that there's someone uh, to, that the city clerk would send the notices out if someone hasn't designated a, a local agent. Kind of the same way that corporations in the state of Illinois designate the secretary of state uh, as their agent for service. Uh, uh, you, you can serve, uh, uh, out-of-state corporations that way. I think it's, I think that's a similar idea in the intent, but that, that's an existing thing, uh, that's in the code.
Mr. Wayne?
Yeah, I might be able to clarify. So, if you had a, somebody who owned a, the, the, a rental in Moline, but they lived in New Jersey. So, but now the city wants to serve them with immunities notice or something like that. Rather than having to go track the guy down in New Jersey and serve notice on them. They would have been required to either designate a local agent or the city clerk as the person where we could serve notice to. And then the city clerk could just mail it to them, and that would just be sufficient for the lawsuit to, to, to start for service.
That, doesn't that then, isn't that at odds with the, uh, I meant the proposed ordinance allows the person to be a natural person as opposed to the unnatural people that may own the, the properties within a thirty-mile radius? So, aren't those two things at odds with each other? Like the New Jer, the New Jersey owner versus the natural, totally real person within thirty miles?
Mr. Hey, Mr. Wayne?
Yeah, I mean, the, the idea is if you had somebody who lived in Alito, but I think that's technically within the thirty miles or whatever. We could serve them. Is they, that would be within that thirty-mile radius. But if it was somebody who lived in Chicago, they couldn't say, hey, come and serve me, find me.
Understood.
They have to have, have identified somebody within that thirty-mile, uh, radius. So that it's not unduly burdensome on the city to go down and track somebody down.
Understood, thank you.
Sorry.
Drake has a comment.
And, and also, that thirty miles, we, was something that was changed. And originally it said, I believe, Rock Island County. And we thought to ourselves, geez, you got people living closer in Bedmore, we drive across the bridge, that they could still be an agent. And so, we figured thirty miles, approximately thirty, forty-five minutes, right? That seems like a reasonable, uh, you know, area to be able to control your property and take care of it.
What, what is the likelihood that if we initiate the license program and, um, enforce fines and all these pen, the penalty side, et cetera, and a landlord is for, I'm, I'm gonna be totally off with this. I think, oh, the landlord is maybe forced to shut down because they're not keeping things up. Do we have a program in place for those displaced renters? I'm con, I'm concerned that we start a program that is meant to do good, and then all of a sudden we're displacing people. Do we have a, KJ, is that a question for you or for Drake or?
Right here. I, I can, I can tell you how it came down in, uh, the city of Davenport, of course. They went through something like this, what, about a year and a half ago?
Baby multifamily.
Exactly. And, uh, they were put in an awkward position scrambling to try to find a place for the people to go. So, you're right, that, that can be an issue.
Then I would say on the cleaned up, not the scrambled mess.
Yeah.
You gotta put a bubble on there for the displacement potential and, and, uh, and how we're gonna handle that.
Mr. Wayne?
To, to speak to that, what some communities have done, and, and I think this is a provision that maybe we should have included in with it. That in those situations where, uh, it's suspended, revoked, the place is non-havable or, or whatever. Uh, that you have the ability to, the city can put the people up in Alito. I mean, finding a place is a different.
I've run into that with KJ last.
That, that becomes a different matter. I mean, I, I'm, those people who were the, uh, the duplex fire. I, I actually had an opening, so I made, I was able to put them in, in. But there's not always people who have openings right at that moment, right? So, um, so that's a different issue, but you can then have a provision in it that says that we can then put a lien against that property to collect those, uh, those fees. Now, if a property is so far gone that it's not worth anything. There, there's gonna be some where you, where there's some losses on it. There's gonna be others where eventually when it sells, that you could then, um, uh, possibly, uh, pull back some of those funds, uh, in the, uh, proceeds, uh, to, to pay for whatever those, uh, displacement costs might be.
Yes, John.
I'd like to, uh, make some suggestions based on what the city manager outlined. Um, as you know, we are housing and housing is what we do and we do it very well and we're proud of what we've achieved. Uh, in terms of the quality of inspections or the proactive. We deal with landlords under our sectioning program. What we do, we advertise for landlords, they apply, we vet them, we interview them. Then we go and do what we call pre-inspection before we approve them to be on, on, on the program. And then we do inspections during the program, when we have the program, one-year inspection. I don't know whether the city has the resources to do that. And I don't know whether the law also allows the city to require all landlords to register with the city prior to renting. If the law allows, then you can do the pre and the post-inspection as we do for our sectioning program. Uh, we use the H U S, uh, inspection tool called Housing Quality Standard, H Q S. Which is called by the federal government, very, very strict, springy, the highest of all inspection. City, I don't know whether you use that or maybe incorporate that especially. But that did I want to suggest is, uh, the software for the housing program. Uh, we use H U S, which is very, very good.
You need to spell that?
H A.
Thank you.
And then there are two leading, uh, software industry software providers that do some new housing-related programs. One is called LIZ, and then one is called YADI. So, those are the suggestions I want to add to the housing programs. It's important that the city, uh, make sure this program works because housing is important. I see every day, that's all I see exclusively. And it's important that, um, they're right, because there are people in the city that need housing. And, and there's not a lot of them.
Thank you for giving us the names of those programs, especially I think to the staff, to the administrator. Any kind of efficiencies we can have by, uh, mirroring what's happening with our partner in M H A, that would be smart, um, if it works for us.
Mr. Wayne, oh, Mr. Wayne and then Mr. Susan.
Thank you.
What else?
Uh, one, one question. So, if you were to find some landlords that say had some dangerous, uh, things going on, some electrical that, you know, is dangerous or whatnot, do you report them or do you just say you're out of this program?
No, we, we prosecute the, the, the notice to put it right.
Oh, so there is communication.
And if we do the pre-inspection, we'll give you the same information that in order to accept through this program, you have to do these things right. And we'll go back to explaining what's is that, then we accept them. When they end the program, we do the annual inspections, we give them places. If they fail to comply, then we take them, we take them off the program.
Okay, but do, do they get reported to the city? Or is it just they're out of your program?
Yes, that reports as the city.
Okay.
So, that's a great point. And, um, again, working with partners, whatever makes sense to mirror and not reinvent the wheel here with programs that I've experienced and work, and also create more communication between us and those partners would be smart. In my opinion, yes, Mr. Wayne.
John, th- thank you very much. I, um, and so, I, I guess maybe for clarification, maybe as an addition into the, uh, the ordinance that I was gonna propose was, um, for those single-family, um, landlords that are part of the Section Eight program. Because the, the Section Eight, uh, uh, inspection, the frequency is, is, is higher than what is being proposed right here. We've got an A property, it's gonna be every four years or whatever, where, uh, John's program is every single year. And so, what I would propose is that we have some kind of provision in there that if they can show a pass, uh, from John's program within the last two years, that that would then suffice with it as an inspection for the city. So, that might offset, I mean, there's maybe about a hundred single-family properties, hundred and fifty that, uh, so that would at least take some of those off of ours and, and, and those sorts of things.
H Q S is, I've, I've done many of them, and it, it's, it's an interesting inspection. Uh, it has questions like, does your toilet flush? Uh, is there a light in the room? Uh, you know, those type of things. Uh, you know, again, when we're going in there, we're also gonna be checking the re, the receptacle to make sure that it's wired correctly, that we don't have miswired uh, receptacles. We're gonna be, uh, looking at, at how G F I's are and how they are and how. So, we're, you know, it is good, and I like to use it. Yeah. It's been, but there, there's, there's, uh, a little bit, little bit difference between the two of them. I mean, it's a, that ours, that we are actually probably a slight bit more stringent than a, a general H Q S.
Well, and, and, and that's another thing that I, I wanted to talk about is that I, I, I think as we move into this system. Um, because, like Dubuque's going through this right now, that I, I think we need to take baby steps into this. I mean, we've got a lot of houses that are, you know, still knob and tube and they, you know, got, got two-wire that has been converted. Somebody changed into a three-wire thing. If we wind up to that granularly approach, day one, you guys are gonna be overwhelmed. Every landlord is gonna be overwhelmed. We're gonna have residents that are then, or tenants that are gonna be kicked out. I, I think we need to slowly ramp this up. It, it, the, the idea of bringing an older home up to current code, just because there's tenants in there, I think is a bridge way too far, too fast. And so, I, I, I think we need to, uh, temper those expectations that we're gonna have the super stringent inspection right off the bat. From my standpoint, having dealt with landlords and in Rock Island, and, and to, uh, uh, Alderman Tanyan's, uh, point. Rock Island does do an initial inspection, but they do not do an inspection every time tenant moves in and out. It, so, I, I wanna temper people's expectations that, oh, we'll just be able to use this if they're gonna have pictures of every time somebody moves in and out and we're gonna. That, that's not how this program is gonna work. That's not how Rock Island's, uh, works, uh, either. But it is a, um, an inspection that goes through and, you know, those twenty-five most important things, you know, smoke detectors, there's a carbon monoxide that, uh, the, the flue's vented correctly. That, you know, those sorts of things. And if down the road, we want to start to, to turn that dial up, that then, it, because otherwise we will never get through that forty-five, uh, thousand, forty-five hundred. Uh, we're just gonna be chasing our tails on, on, on things. So, I, I think that that's, that's really important. Um, the, the other thing, we talk about displacement and, and those sorts of things. A number of areas, and, and I think I shared maybe, uh, Minneapolis is, is the example. That I'd like to add to the, uh, the code, that if somebody is a frequent, uh, suspension or revocation, you know? And, and I think it has in the first thing, if you have a suspension or revocation, you gotta wait two years. Well, if you get a suspension or revocation a second time, you've gotta wait five years. And if you get it a third time, you never get another license in, in the city of Moline. And that's not just for that particular property, that's for all of your properties. And, and because you, you run into these issues, and that's why Minneapolis went to, to this approach. Then you had people who like, well, yeah, that's my cash cow. I'll let, I'll drive that into the ground, but I've got thirty other in the city. And I'll slowly drive into the ground is, you know, so you have that, um, that, those teeth to say, keep all your stuff up. Rather than just draining money out of the, the city and then slowly letting them one by one, uh, go into disrepair. So, I, I think that that's something that needs to be, uh, taken into consideration.
I like this idea, and I'm curious though, um, isn't it common practice to put a, a new LLC for each, uh, rental unit to prevent liability exposure across, but is, is there a way to?
Well, that, well, that's why in this registration, it talks about, uh, the, the actual owners of the entity. So, you, 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 you do that. Now, that being said, I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. There's a provision in here that talks about, and also put anyone with equitable interest. Well, that means the tenant, the tenant has equitable interest in that property. So, I'm not sure if we're trying to, or is that just, uh?
If, 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 I'm not smiling.
And, and are we trying to do a tenant registry? Because I, I have talked, well.
Talking about like, uh, beneficiary of the trust.
Then, then that needs to be clarified because any equitable interest, if you got a lease on the property, you've got an equitable interest in, in that property, so.
Yeah, it's supposed to be met as, like anybody with any financial touch.
Well, the reason I ask is because like, I think it's maybe up in North Scott or something that they do free, uh, background checks on, uh, on tenants because the police then go, okay, well, now we've got a record of who's moving into our community and they can. That was just a question of just trying to make sure that I understand why.
So, the, the point is we need to, to find what equitable interest means legally and the way we want it.
He's right, excluding tax.
Mr. Wayne?
What other just quick thing, um, with the math regarding how many people it'll take? We have to also remember that Rock Island is about. we have to also remember that Rock Island is about sixteen percent more um non-owner occupied than we are. So when you're, when you're doing the comparison of of overall population, that's not the population that we're talking about that are rentals. And I would also make the argument that our housing stock is probably in better shape than theirs. And so I I don't disagree that we're probably around four, but we're probably not more than four, if you use the correct math.
What we're what we're using, what we're really using to drive it is going to be the number of units, right, forty-five hundred units. And if they've got forty-five hundred, take two hundred and twenty days a year, figure out how many inspections reasonably he done at any given day out of two hundred and twenty days a year.
Yeah, but but we're not doing them every single year.
No, we're not, but to get to them all over time, I got a five-year roll up.
I I I I can give you the quick numbers from Rock Island, okay? Rock Island last year did five hundred and fifty-seven rental inspections, okay, with their uh uh with three people uh and when their one gentleman had retired, and that averaged forty-six per month. So again, uh if uh we do, we have a total of five thousand one hundred and fifty units divided by approximately forty-seven uh equals a hundred and nine months, which equals about nine years to do all our properties. So so that's using their their data for one full year, okay, so.
All right, or should I?
I think that I I share a lot of concerns about moving, moving too fast, wanna make sure that as we do this, so we are layering it in, putting these pieces through, but I think it is, it is also something where we we need it. We need to move into a place where we're taking care of some of the problem, making sure that it is protected. I mean, I I think there's there's broad agreement on that. A couple concerns I did have looking at this was, we have I mean, this is not all bad, but do we have any expectation that anybody in a program like this would cause an increase in rent prices? Oh, wow. Well, I I it absolutely, I mean, and not just from the cost of our inspections, but we're gonna run low rents, you know.
One property that has, uh, belongs.
But it's Yeah, if they're passing on a hundred bucks.
Well, I'm not concerned.
You know. It's not a hundred bucks a month, it's a hundred bucks a year.
Yeah, a hundred bucks a year, yeah. Right, right, you're worried about next year.
Yeah, the hundred bucks a month that uh that's a bigger part of me is not what I'm concerned. I'm concerned, A, frankly, if you look at the average cost, there'll be some properties that would no longer be able to function in that. And we would, and that, which also causes us short-term problems, displaced people as the mayor spoke to. Uh but but our average price will go up because of those fares, because we're closing down some of those cheapest properties. Like how, and I I wanna make sure we're balancing that.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. Went had his stand up then, Mr. Moore.
So 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 yes and no. I mean, it's not elastic, because these people, if they already own the property, they own the property. I mean, they're they're going to, you know, so what they can increase their rents is based on what's going on in the market. Yes, will it probably increase, but that's also most likely because on the, on the average, it's going to increase the quality of the properties that that people are given. And I completely agree that this is there to protect tenants.
That's also there to protect landlord.
I would much prefer to be in a community that are running out bad landlords so that I'm competing for tenants, that they don't wind up going to somebody else who undersells you for by fifty bucks, but then the person winds up in squall. Or the person doesn't fix things or or whatever. It it needs to be, so so yes, as the entire uh I guess rental market starts to increase and be in a better situation, yes, rents will increase. And so that that's where, you know, you you get into that situation, not all nine hundred uh some odd people are homeless. They're often living in substandard, paying very low rent, waiting to get onto a program so they can get into something that is much nicer. Now, there is gonna be some situations, because that low-hanging fruit stuff is finally going to get addressed. But I think the alternative of like, well, not touching it, it just becomes worse. And you know, we talked about, you guys just knock down three houses in in Moline, that has been the, you you let them get bad enough and then eventually they just get get torn out. So we've got to stop at someplace.
I have a lot, I know I I said here next, but if I might interject, uh because again, we have partnerships and um we, with M C D C in particular, if you're talking about finding a way to make it so that, you mentioned in my ear um the cost to make the improvements on a whole, right? What if there are ways that M C D C can help us regardless, you know, we have to look at your service area, but if this is a city by program, are we helping to increase the service area by finding a solution with a partner on that side of things so that the cost doesn't get um transferred quite as much? Just off the top of my head, I deal with our partnership issues. Mr. Moore.
I was just gonna mention that if you wanna bring the prices down, we need to talk about housing supply.
Yeah.
And so as we work with Land Bank and and basically, you you add a couple hundred more units into the mix and there changes, yeah, you will start to stabilize the price.
And just to to follow up on the question I was getting at is, I would like to see us as part of this also find the ways to commit to how we work on that supply issue. Because what I don't wanna see is that we have a lot of families who are forced to leave Moline, right? They maybe are choosing to live in substandard housing because it gives them access to our schools. And we wanna even, and and wanna find opportunities to make sure those families can land in a home while still ensuring that they're living in a place that is meeting the standards of the affordability that we expect. I think it it's, I would love to simply just go out and cut down every property that has any sort of substandard living, but I think there's a reality that we have to, you know, that we're people making those choices sometimes, and we have to have ways to help them navigate that. Because we're forcing them to not, you know, make this decision, step down that path, we have to just do a cautious bit here. And and I think that gets to the inspections of, it's a twenty-five big things that are right in, you know, to make it habitable and and move into the right direction. And then, they said, if you want to start turning it up from there, because I agree with you. I mean, if we all of a sudden cut out the bottom fifteen percent of our rentals because we just declared, you know, you close it down until you get them up to current code, we we're gonna have a disaster. And so um now, that being said, I I I think that this ramping up, I I I like the idea kind of mirroring what we've done uh historically of like, hey, this is a uh um a grade A, we're gonna do this every four years or five, I mean, we may have to adjust that and may wind up having to be every five years until we kind of get this up and and running. Um but I think we will quickly identify the C or D properties that we need to get into and and address immediately.
I'm chair.
Yes, Mr. Hung.
In terms of supply, as you well know, Moline is landlord, so you can't go this way or you can go that.
No, uh.
Yeah, the city and the state is.
That we're doing five stories now, huh?
So um we don't have land to develop, that's our main challenge. Uh so we need to look at brownfields and and determining how high they should go. Uh obviously, we don't want high rises in the great social progress, so we need to determine how high the brownfields should go. Uh the city has run at the other side of the earth. The problem is the infrastructure is still there, where you have to fast and the the land, they are just aware of that, you have vast land over here. So the city needs to start, they could about getting infrastructure there for us to be able to develop that infrastructure, we need to water, sewer, and all that. Once the city is able to invest in that infrastructure for that, then that could be an area that could be developed to add to 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 the mix we we need. The last thing I want to ask, then then I, I'll shut up, is what is the city doing about implementing the Biden's rental uh renters' bill of rights? It was, it was announced about two months ago. The Biden administration wrote out what's called renters' uh bill of rights. You know, that's on renters' renters' right. It's a federal program, but I think the cities are to, so please look into that.
Is it passed?
Yes.
The houses, he's signed it as law?
Exactly.
Or it's been proposed?
That was exactly what it is.
Okay.
Exactly, and I think actually Illinois's laws are probably more stringent than that.
Okay, the White House came up.
We'll check.
That that's the gift Mississippi will. Illinois is, is much more for renters.
Okay, um, well, Mr. Vitas' deadline has passed, but uh
Yes, it has.
Yeah, but, and I I have a feeling we're getting to a place where we need to um wrap it up, but also then look to the future for the future conversations. And as I looked at the draft implementation plan, and and now having um had our initial conversation and acknowledging that this is a long process, I know that you have certain phases in here, you know, you don't have deadlines or that kind of thing, and that is okay. But in my brain, we talked about how you look at this and tackle the issue, those three big bubbles, right? The I know you're working on them all at once, but if you could consider bringing back to the council reports on each of the big bubble areas, do you understand what I'm saying, Tom? Home?
Maybe a part of it.
Right, the partnership, yeah, actually, that could work, that could work. That could work, but you know, but so that you're, we know what, where we're at in the conversation. I do think there will have to be, you know, maybe another roundtable like this once you've gotten a lot more information um to share or ha- having gone through a lot more information before we get to the actual proposed, you know, debating all of this. There's a lot more information we need in progress, the audience.
Your point, your point is well taken. We 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 talked about metrics and and how to measure what we're doing in each of these respective arenas. So that we can justify what it is we're requesting importantly, but just as importantly, modeling your ordinances to real- realistically be in line with our resources. I can't enforce an ordinance fully if I don't have all the resources to do it, and there's a balance there. And we don't know where that is sitting here today.
I I might also suggest, um oh, I lost it. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I I I suggest it in the implementation of this, that we plan ahead, that it be over probably a five-year period of time as as you go through it, that as uh properties register, come on, we do an exterior drive-by, rate them, then triage it. You know, if it's a A property or whatever, you say, okay, needs to get scheduled in the next four or five years. You know, I go by this one, we need to get into this place as soon as possible. And, you know, because it's gonna take time. I mean, as as we've seen with the uh crime free, there are gonna be um probably about two-thirds maybe to three-quarters of the landlords that will come in, once they know about it, they'll register, they'll do what they're supposed to do. There's still going to be a a portion that uh that that don't comply. But again, getting back to the thing, we need to have the fines, we need to have the teeth, that so that if they don't, that it becomes economically untenable for them not to adhere to it and as to her and those sorts of things. And and to your point about about costs, I mean, you know, a lot of these landlords aren't making a ton of, like, I'll use an example I've got in Rock Island, like, I'm getting eight ninety-five for the place with insurance that just went up, I'm paying eight sixty-three a month on it. So with that, you know, sixty dollars, I have to do all repairs, I have to save money for a new roof. I mean, like, yeah, and then you throw an extra hundred dollars on it, well, then that's two months worth of, you know, of that increment. And so, I mean, it's not necessarily, they're making tons and tons of 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 money on it, and so you you've got to be careful, because I think Rock Island is forty-seven dollars is the uh uh is the cost. You know, we're proposing a hundred dollars, which is double of of what that, I I'm not saying that that's the wrong number. I'm not saying that maybe we start at something and 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 ramp it up, but we just have to be careful. I I don't necessarily think that we have to make it super easy and cheap and and that they shouldn't be paying their way, but you also have to remember, these people also providing housing for those people who can't otherwise own a home but want to live in Moline and 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 those sorts of things. So it's always a balance.
Mr. Schmidt.
And 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 my concerns, I'm expressing, have more to do with the affordability side of that equation. Um it is not that I think those landlords are overcharged, I'm not coming to the, I'm other side, I'm sure. Of of course, of course. There's, there's a wide range of what that is, but it is that recognition that we are not likely to find as many issues in high-rent areas. And so it's gonna impact certain citizens. And just being aware of how we deal with all of that, um it comes of of my, one of my concerns is I don't wanna see us, I don't wanna see us just running out people who can't afford to pay higher rents. That is very much something I'm not willing to push forward. And it's, so it's it's about making sure that while we are working on this, we're finding those opportunities to work on that supply problem as well and solve that issue, which is an issue regardless of whether what we're doing now. But I I I will tell you, with the housing stock that we have in Moline, I don't think it's going to be anytime soon that our 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 rents are gonna be so high that there's not gonna be low mod uh um prices uh in in Moline or places that you can find, just, it's just the reality. There's a lot of tired rentals in in Moline, and they just can't, you you can't get that much in in rent, because people won't pay that much. And so the hope is that over time, it'll it it'll raise up, but I don't think by implementing this and making sure they got smoke detectors and those sorts of things, that will increase it so much because people aren't going to pay a thousand dollars a month for a one-bedroom that you're sharing a building with or something, you know. Right, until we shut down some of the forty rental properties. I mean, someone who runs afoul of an ordinance and now forty rental properties go down at the time, now we've got a crisis. Well, yeah, but 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 no, because you you can also have things where you uh uh you uh appoint a receiver, so that if they can't do it, you can no longer manage this. We put in a receiver that then does manage it, you, because you don't want a situation where like all of a sudden forty people are kicked, I don't know. That's not how other communities do it, and I would never say that that's how we would do it either. There are tools that you can go through to mitigate those concerns if you got.
Okay, so to to wrap this up, um I appreciate knowing that you and the staff continue to tackle this, but I really do wanna see some deadlines, like uh we can have monthly reports, but obviously, when it comes to budget time, we should definitely have some real tangible information that we can bat around as we put our money where our mouth is. So I I do think that you, that in this um pathway to meaningful change or the uh time, any kind of timeline that you can put together, I just don't want us talking about a program that, you know, takes way longer to actually um transpire, right? We have to have some timeline for ourselves, that's all. Yes, Mr. Went.
Yeah, what I would like to see, because I've just seen over time, too many things to bleed into four or five years from now, and we still haven't gotten it done, is continue to work on the actual language of what this ordinance is going to look like. Uh bring it back, have us pass something, but it be contingent upon, with staff recommendations, if we if we accept the the ordinance as it's written here, this is what we're going to need in next year's budget or or whatever the case may be. Because if you do the, the, because otherwise you get into this chicken and the egg, be like, well, now we're getting into budgeting for next year. Well, we've got to budget the number of people, but we don't have an ordinance. Are are we sure we're all in agreement on what the ordinance is supposed to say or how strict it's supposed to be? So I I I think doing it the opposite way, where you come up with the ordinance and say
This is the expectation.
This is the expectations, and if you're you're passing this, it's not gonna go into effect until we hire these people. But here is what it is, you're gonna have to budget these next year and and that, because I think that that's probably a more constructive way policy-wise, us making the determinations, are we going to say it has to be inspected every three years, every four years, every five years? That's a policy decision, and that would then affect how many people you need. And so I I I think that that's probably the better way. And I think you can get it done sooner than waiting till.
At least you put it on a timeline, you know.
I will put it on a timeline, and I would pass each member of. I will put it on a timeline, and I would ask each member of council, if you all have copies of the draft, that's prepared, ready, or ready. If you have comments, please share them with me directly, and see if I can, if it's a good point.
Thank you.
That would be a great start.
We're about to move to Ms. Lenny's business, Mr. Wentz.
Is it possible, I mean, like the, the Airbnb or the vacation rental thing, that seems to be like, we could probably move, we could maybe move forward with that sooner than this, than, than later. And so, I'd like to see that move forward, and I, it was sent late, around five o'clock or something like that. I did ask for a sex offender, um, uh, review and notice to neighbors, if you're renting to someone on the registered sex offender, because these are different than hotels and motels, these are in people's neighborhoods and, and those sorts of things. And, uh, there are other places that have had that kind of notification, I think, uh, Scottsdale is the example I have, I have provided. So, if you get a chance to look at those, I think that that's a, I think a good one.
Okay, moving to Ms. Lenny's business. Obviously, we, many, many Molineers celebrated the, um, amazing win our, um, um, boys' basketball team had this weekend. I saw a lot of you at the Sunday celebration, and we continue to find ways to, um, express our appreciation for the wonderful job and resilience that they all have. Um, there's a lot going on, so I'll save it for next week.
Just echo the mayor's sentiments about the basketball team, and it'd be great if the community had a visit.
Yes, I, I agree, uh, they really brought not just Molineers, but the whole region together. So, uh, yeah, it was just really cool watching, seeing, and it was interesting watching your fourteen-year-old daughter say, ooh, I have a picture of the player.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was awesome, went down on, on Saturday. Uh, it gave me the excuse to actually break out my old Letterman jacket, and it actually fits. So, I embarrassed my kids terribly by wearing it, uh, to shame them, but, uh, but it was, it was a great game. Saw tons of people from, from Moline, it was, uh, it was, it was wonderful to be down there, and, uh, they did a great job.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I was just thinking, if I were to wear my clothes from the nineties, they would also fit. But that's because in the nineties, we wore really large clothes. So, I'm not sure if it's, it's this, if it, it means the same thing, but.
Oh, I thought I was gonna be six-three and like two-twenty, so that's probably why my clothes are bigger.
Um, no, in, in serious, though, it's, it's, it's a great victory for the community, I think it's wonderful, thank you.
Just to say, I really appreciate all the work staff put into both of our informationals tonight. It's a housing program, I'm stoked, it's been years, we've been kinda asking for some of the stuff. It's kinda coming together, we got really great people on it, just appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bye.
Yeah, I like what they did with the housing program, too, kudos to staff, everybody, uh, everybody, go Moline's.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas, and Mr. Beckdaisen.
I'm going to, again, congratulate the boys' basketball team. I mean, it's an honor to be sitting in a city with a state championship class four A team, but it doesn't happen that often, you know?
It's never happened.
Getting the bridge turned to Burgundy. I mean, I didn't know what feedback you got, but, you know, Hector was on.
Hector took care of it.
I, I wrote him in the morning, I said, the winning goes to Burgundy, right? He goes, uh, uh, no, no debate, I mean, but nobody else gets questions about it. So, what we got at Burgundy tomorrow, it'll be, it'll be pretty interesting, as he say. I wanna thank you guys for taking the time to let us present this information tonight. You know, it really is at the forefront, I think, of where we are going forward in terms of meeting our strategic goals and those pillars. I mean, if we can solve for this problem, I mean, we're unstoppable, so we'll get there.
Uh, just, uh, my eleven-year-old got autographs on his, one of his shoes, won't start her, so, yeah, I was excited.
Great, thank you so much, any public comment after this? No, and we have no executive session, correct? There'll be a motion to adjourn. Look for my elder man, Moyer, I was thinking about, there's a went, uh, all in favor?